Yes.
You want to click on got it on your computers? Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Joshua, typically I rely on our board clerk to let me know who would the next person in rotation that's an alternate to be seated. Who that should be. Of the three alternates, if we have a regular member or more than one who's not in attendance. So that said, I'll take care of this on the fly.
Keep track of that for next time.
And I'm looking at our alternates. Just, I'm gonna seat Larry Preston if you're here, Larry.
Here.
Okay, Larry, I'm gonna seat you this evening and then Josh, I will have you go keep track of who we see.
A little bit.
But I ask everybody to please mute unless you're recognized by the by the chair. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So you have who is in attendance, Joshua? Okay, just for the public, we're going a little slower than usual. Joshua is our new board clerk, Joshua Stern, and thank you for the work. And we're just gonna help him through and make sure we comply with procedure. Any changes or additions to the agenda, Paula?
No.
Okay, the minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, are there any corrections or changes from members?
I think that I saw.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Tom, any discussion? All those in favor, either raise your hand or say aye. Any nays or abstentions?
I can't vote because I I wasn't seated last week.
Okay, so you are will abstain on this vote.
It's not abstaining, he just wasn't.
I take that back, I'm sorry. You're both correct.
Please make note that Larry Preston abstained on the vote. All the others voted in affirmative for passing the approval of for the minutes of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'm sorry, any discussion on that? All those in favor again? Okay, that would be unanimous except for an extension by Larry Preston. Audience of citizens, is there anything anybody would like to bring up to us that isn't already on the agenda? Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to new business. This is a submission by a group of members of our community. Under the title C. Briggs at Al, meaning and others. For a zoning amendment application to repeal section fifty-two point seven point five, the event slash wedding venue facilities. What we're doing now is receiving this application for a change to our regulations by a member of the public. And then setting a public hearing. We won't be discussing this in any manner tonight. We're simply setting the public hearing. The suggested public hearing date that Paula put out was March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Is everybody on the commission in agreement with that?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yes.
Any thoughts? Okay, I'll make a motion that we set the schedule the public hearing for March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, seven P M. Justin seconded that. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous? It is, thank you. So to members of the public. We will open the public hearing and go over the rules for the public hearing at that time, standard rules as we've always used. And I appreciate that. You know, give due consideration to this request for a regulation change. Thank you very much. Next up are, we're gonna discuss regulation revisions. Just for members of the public that were here for that, please stay for the meeting. We'd love to have you, but there'll be no other discussion of the 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 scheduled public hearing. Regulation revisions. There's four things. Paul and I had a meeting in the office this past week. And I just wanna call out one thing before we get into all this. She drafted an affordable housing plan, and I have to say that it's exceptional. I'm very impressed with the work that you did, Paula. That was in our meeting packet. Going through all of this, there's a draft of a multifamily housing regulation. There's a draft of the Affordable Housing Plan. The housing plan doesn't require us to set a public hearing. We can just adopt it by a vote of the commission. There's also the recreational cannabis perspective that we have on on the recreational cannabis. Per our comments from our last meeting. And then the last item D, separate from the section three revisions, is the wordsmithing to update, not using the word character. Then there's also, we'll get into section three in the next section of the regulation revisions. So that said, Paula, would you like to speak to what you've drafted for the multifamily housing?
We've looked at it for for a while, it's.
There's no changes from the last time.
No, no, there's no changes. We need to to make a decision as to what part of town. Whether it would be in all the R A districts, or if it would be in in some of the other districts, or if we would create a whole new district.
Any thoughts from the commission? My original thoughts were that we would like to make possibly limit this to the corridor on Route Six on the right-hand side going toward Andover. There's a large residential space there that seems underused as residential. We had a discussion and I'm gonna ask those members of the commission to just speak their minds on it. I think I've said what I I thought about it. Is there any way you could bring a map up of the town, Paula? Is that can easily done by you?
I can.
Okay, the the one where that had the green outlines of the
Yep.
Before and after the potential corridor that I'm referring to, I think you know which one I mean.
I I think so, I'm working on it.
Okay. So the the concept here is if we're going to adopt regulations for affordable housing, we have to make a critical decision. There it is. Thank you. We have to make, so the C M one zones there on the Route Six corridor. We have to make a, if we don't specify where it's allowed, then it could be anywhere in town, in essence, any residential district.
Any district.
Any district, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, it's.
You know, I hate giving up commercial land for a residential use because we have so little of it. That's just my general thought. That's not a final thought, that's just a general thought. So we're looking for a comfort level with the the proposed regulation as it's presented. And it would be, you know, minor changes reflecting dates and things like that, but it's pretty well-developed. I'm going to that in our packet. I'm looking for, you know, I was just reviewing it.
Should be one of the first sections. I believe we put it in there. I might not have, okay.
I'm going from memory and I don't see. Yeah, there was the application for the regulation change.
I might not have had Josh put it in.
Okay.
My fault.
Easy for everyone to bring this up from a prior meeting packet?
Yeah, I have it, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it up also.
I think one of the things to consider, if in terms of the where. If the zoning is changed for the C M one to add multifamily as a possibility, that doesn't mean that anyone would would, a developer would come in and put in multifamily. And it doesn't necessarily change if it's if an undeveloped lot is undeveloped. We're not, you know, a particular lot would would still be able to be, you know, a gas station or kombis or whatever would wanna come in, just because we've.
I understand, but the idea that the land may get used for a residential use when we have other residential areas, that's a critical question for for our commission to weigh in on.
Yeah, I was I was addressing Rich, some of the comments Richard made earlier. It, I was thinking, well, maybe he thinks that if we we zone particular, that because I had identified some lots that could, I thought could possibly support multifamily. It's not changing that particular lots designation. And I just wanted to make sure that he realized that.
So it's just an additional use in that zone?
It's just an additional use in that zone and the zoning regulations.
Kind of like an overlay zone.
Yeah, and it's the the zoning language, the actual regulation would would specify the that it has to be a lot that's greater than X number of acres, probably ten or fifteen acres. That it would need, you know, X number of feet of frontage. So it's, it would limit the lots in that regard. And I don't, with the fact that we don't have city water and city septic, it's gonna be very difficult to for anyone to develop a multifamily anywhere in our town. But as of October first, if we don't allow them somewhere, and this is three family and up, if we don't allow that somewhere, then legally they are allowed everywhere. That was a law that was changed this past spring.
Okay, that said, there's gonna be plenty of time to discuss all this, but if we need to revise our zoning map to reflect differently where we're going to put it in a specific area, that's a much larger project. If we're comfortable adopting this in our entire C M one zone, for example, then it's a matter of scheduling the public hearing and defining what areas within the proposed regulation we need to quantify prior to setting a public hearing.
What's our deadline? Is a deadline in June?
October one for adoption.
This Pat, no, it's the past October first.
Pardon me?
October first of two thousand and twenty-one.
We're working in arrears.
It just means.
We have to get this done as soon as possible. Is that my understanding?
Yes, all of the things on the that's under eight-one, we really need to get done as soon as possible.
Okay, so let me propose that we that we aim at the C M one zone. If we wanna modify that in the future, take that as another step in this process if we decide to to move forward. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so by, and any objections to that?
Are we gonna bundle this with that public hearing in in March?
It's, it's actually April, April twenty-fifth is what we had targeted for. And it's, we, the 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 Affordable Housing Plan does not need to be on a public hearing. And that has to be adopted by June first.
Yeah, and the repeal of the potential consideration of the repeal of the event venue regulation, I'd like to keep as its own topic for the night as much as possible. And I wanna have enough time for everybody to have their their say on it, all the members of the public.
Yeah, that's that's next month, that's in March. The tentative date we had set for these for a public hearing was was the end of April, April twenty-five.
What, let me, Paula, do we need to go through the variables that were in the the regulation? It's this is in the the January twenty-fourth meeting packet, starting on page nine. Do we need to quantify prior to the public hearing minimum, like under item C, the minimum frontage?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And it's thirty days prior to that public hearing, I need to send the every abutting town, the regulations, the proposed for all anything that's being proposed, and also to whatever COGS, Council of Governments they belong to. Which is just Southeast, Southeast COG and Capitol Region. So we have to notify all of them. They're looking, so that's, so I need to know by the end of March what we're taking to a public hearing, or actually by March March twenty-fifth, I need to give them over thirty days notice, so it'd be the middle of March. So this meeting or the next meeting, we need to decide what's going to a public hearing.
Okay, so let's go through item C as proposed. Let me read it out loud in case anyone wasn't able to bring those up. Item C has to do with site eligibility. This, the regulation as it's proposed states the minimum total contiguous land area required for a multi-form for a multifamily dwellings project site is as follows. First bullet point, the site shall have a minimum frontage of X feet on a state road or a town road, it's a typo in there, a town road in excess of X feet in travel width. So Paula, could you explain why on the state road you have the frontage and on the town road the road width? And not not also the frontage?
It would be.
Why wouldn't we have the frontage requirement on either either road and then the minimum width of the road on the town road?
I I thought that's what I was saying, maybe the comma doesn't belong there. It's just saying that the town road, if if your frontage is on the town road, just for safety reasons, it has to be a wide enough road to to handle the traffic. Or you don't even say that.
Yeah, so we would likely do better to modify this. The site shall have a minimum frontage of X feet.
One hundred, two hundred, a hundred and fifty?
We can, we can get to that. I'm just trying to wordsmith this for the moment.
Okay.
And then maybe period after feet and without designating a state or a town road. On town roads, the width must must be X feet or more in the frontage area.
Okay.
Do you think that would define it well enough?
Yep, I do.
Okay, so just get rid of on a state road after X feet and we'll we'll discuss X feet and then.
Rick, Rick, excuse me. That's the assumption that there are some town roads that don't allow two-way traffic? It wouldn't be wide enough for two-way traffic?
No, I don't think that that's the assumption. At least that's not my personal perspective. I'm just saying that Paula is suggesting that that's something we may wanna consider if we're going to have a larger multifamily development that if, or any multifamily development, that the town road be wide enough. You know, there may be certain town roads that are not appropriate to have a multifamily development on it. Paula, was that what you were thinking when you?
It is, yeah.
My, my, my point is, I'm not sure any of us are qualified to determine what a safety width would be. And I would rather an engineering study done for the road. Traffic engineering study done for the road that would that would say whether the road. None of us are qualified to determine what the width is.
There's actually, and if we're looking at the C M one, there's only two town roads that would come into play and it's Hop River Road and Roses Bridge Road.
So Bob, maybe what you're saying is that we could consider road width as part of our special permit evaluation criteria?
Yep, yep, exactly.
But we don't even need to mention it in this part of the regulation?
I think that's the right way to do it.
How does everyone else feel about that?
I agree.
Is it, is that you, Bob?
Yes.
Oh, okay, did we have somebody seated for Bob?
No, I, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I joined late, so.
Yeah, but I didn't know if we had, I can't remember if we had somebody seated for Bob.
Vera, thank you. So at this point, Larry, I'm going to unseat you for the rest of the meeting and we will seat Mr. Powell.
Well, my short career is a member tonight, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Larry.
I'm sorry, Larry.
Remember, I I encourage any member of this commission, whether an alternate seated, not seated, to always engage in discussion and and participation. The only time we're constrained is when we're in a review of an item that had gone before a public hearing. So please don't ever hesitate to to speak up. I I would, please encourage it. So.
It was, it was just a housekeeping, it was just a housekeeping comment, nothing more.
No, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I want, I want to know if Larry has to stand up for the rest of the meeting.
No seat for you.
Oh, Larry, I'm glad you have thick skin. Okay, so maybe this first sentence, under the first bullet point, the site shall have a minimum frontage of X feet. That's all we need on that. Now, the question is, how how, what, what amount of frontage do we want for multifamily housing? I mean, let's face it, if there's a hundred units, we might desire a certain frontage, or if there's four units, a lesser frontage.
I think maybe we need a matrix.
So what's the minimum acre size? I would suggest ten or fifteen.
I don't think it should be that much, but that's my opinion. I think five would be.
For how many?
Well, you you would have to determine how many per acre, but I think five acres.
That's in a different part of the regulations.
Alex, I think we can separately discuss the unit, maximum units per acre. Rich, you were gonna say something?
Hey, can I get Paula to stop sharing her screen? Because I'm working on a laptop and I like to see my documents. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's all right.
I, we're all comfortable with doing this in the C M one zone, yeah, so that, thank you for doing that, Paula. So minimum road frontage. We require two hundred feet of road frontage for a new residential lot. I'm comfortable leaving it at two hundred feet for a multifamily lot. Because I'm assuming if the dynamics of how they're gonna situate these units on the site is gonna determine the rest of it, whether they have to be set way back from the road and such. Any thoughts on that? That's just a not really well contemplated thought, but you know, I if if there's a minimum acreage and it has two hundred feet of road frontage, then they may need to build a long driveway in to enable a larger or a higher number of units. You know, if we're we're contemplating a minimum lot size of five acres, we may also wanna contemplate. And I'm not saying we should put it in at this point, what the setbacks from the road need to be. And that's coming up in the next section. And do we want it the same as the residential district? Or given that these may end up being larger scale structures, do we wanna set back farther from the road? And that's just a question we would wanna ask. And I think we can we can probably put in a nominal number now and as part of the public hearing, take input on that and possibly go to a larger setback based on input from the public hearing. We're not bound to the numbers here, but we can't make this a lot more permissive regulation after advertising it and going through a public hearing, we couldn't probably make it more restrictive. And Paula, are you the same perspective on that?
Um, I do, I do.
Okay, so I don't know that we need to establish a lot of this, and I would really like to get the public comments on on the proposed regulation before we fine tune it. You know, that's that's the purpose of having the public hearing process. So what, how about if we go to two hundred feet of frontage on, and after the word on on everything after feet is no longer part of that first bulleted sentence.
And I've I've been working on word as you're talking, and it's what it says on my draft at this point is the site shall have a minimum frontage of two hundred feet, comma, and be at least five acres.
Is everybody comfortable? I don't know, I'm I'm, it's Tom. I guess what's going through my head is I would rather see a setback be further, you know. But maybe the lot not as, not two hundred, but something less than that. But but certainly further back for the setbacks.
When you say two hundred, was that with regard to setbacks or with regard?
No, that was, that's the frontage.
So you think we should have a a smaller frontage than than in residential districts?
Yeah, but make the setback substantially further back.
Yeah, I don't agree on the frontage part, but the setbacks we can get to at a later part of the discussion.
That's my gut on it.
Okay. Well, we can't. We can't all constrain this because. Vera was up next, Vera.
Okay, I can't see anybody, so I'm at a disadvantage. I was just gonna say regarding whether or not you like the two hundred feet of frontage or not. You might remember that, you know, when it's two hundred feet of frontage for a single-family house, chances are you only have one car going in or one car coming out at at the same time. With a multifamily, it's gonna be, you know, twice that.
Well, the the driveway requirements would be for.
You could have.
You'd have to have two-way drives.
Yeah.
Okay, can we go back to? I'm sorry, go ahead, Vera, I don't mean to interrupt.
If you're gonna have two-way traffic coming in, that's gonna, you're gonna need a wider driveway, correct?
Correct.
Then that's gonna take a bigger percentage of your.
You're talking a double, what's twenty-six feet? You're not talking a fifty-foot driveway?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get us to not resolve any of this tonight, just decide what we wanna have in the language to go to the public hearing.
Okay.
So let's, um, minimum frontage, I my preference would be to say two hundred feet. And that's something the public hearing input might cause us to change.
Okay, well, we can do it to public hearing.
Is everyone comfortable with putting two hundred feet in there for now?
Yes.
Yes. No, but that's okay.
Okay. One dissenting perspective from a respected colleague. And the minimum lot, I agree, I'm the same perspective of Tom. I'd like to start this at five acres. I don't wanna see a minimum of ten or fifteen acres. I I see this as having, you know, one or two, three family buildings on one lot.
Me too, that's what I'm saying.
You know, given the scale of development in our town, the idea that there that a larger lot could support a much larger number of units is another consideration altogether.
I don't see it.
I would question that. Think we can identify, we we can sort of do this by how many units per acre you wanna do and not have a minimum lot size? So that if if I wanted to do a duplex, for example, I have to have five acres? I think that's unreasonable.
A duplex is not multifamily, a triplex would be multifamily.
All right, if I want a triplex, I think five acres is onerous.
Yes.
Considering that lots is fifty thousand square feet for single family.
Good, so, but but, well, if you had one, if you had one triplex, one three-family on two acres, is that okay?
No, I'm, all I'm saying is why don't we establish the amount of units per acre as opposed to having a minimum size? Have a sliding scale or a matrix, whatever you want, but.
Well, that's what I suggested about ten minutes ago, though we have a matrix, but nobody picked me up on it.
The this, the proposed regulation also works on the density and the number of units. So it it actually I suppose you don't need a minimum lot size.
I I think that's my point, Paula.
Okay, I can go with that.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you, Bob, and Vera, thank you for those thoughts. Everybody comfortable not having a minimum lot size for? Everybody comfortable not having a minimum lot size for multifamily, other than a, you know, I don't think, yeah, the the units per acre, I I love simple rules, elegant rules. No, no, I mean that, Bob. I see you smiling. Okay, so we're simply going to say have a minimum frontage and for the purpose of establishing the public hearing, we're going to put 200 feet in there. And then not after that, on that first sentence, there's nothing else to be said. The rest of it. The rest of the verbiage in that under section C is okay as presented. Then we go to section D, the site shall be approved by the sanitarian. That's nothing to change there. The setback from a budding properties for primary and accessory structures, parking areas and garbage bins and any amenities shall be at least X feet. Lot coverage shall be state as stated for the district. I'm comfortable with a lot coverage portion and the minimum setback set for amenities and things, I I popping a figure in there, but I I think we're going to need to put some work into having setbacks reflective of the development scale. For example, to plug in on a 20-acre parcel, 50-foot front yard setbacks and 25-foot side yard setbacks, I don't think is going to fit. So without defining those right now, let's just.
I would think it would be larger than what we normally would have in the in the residential district.
I would do too. That's what I was saying. I was thinking maybe 100 foot back.
I would I would suggest something on the order of 100 feet.
You know, the the 100-foot setback, ask yourself whether you want it for prime. Ask yourself if you want the same minimum setbacks for the different categories in this sentence. Primary structures, accessory structures, parking areas, garbage bins, other amenities. There's something that wouldn't really need to be more of a setback than the setback for the primary building, for example. Do we want to tweak this in a way that makes sure that any of the trash storage is not visible from the street or at least shielded from public view? It's so we don't see dumpsters hanging out.
Yeah, I think this, I think the structures and dumpsters should be further back, but I don't think the parking has to be further back.
Yeah, I agree.
So primary and accessory are the and garbage bins are the larger are the larger setbacks.
I wouldn't want those visible from the street.
Yeah.
The bins. Because if you lived across, because if you if you lived across the street, you don't want a cloud or your driveway looking at a dumpster.
Right. One of the things to remember, this these are would be special permit. So it goes through site plan review with a special permit in mind in terms of the commission can say, you know, the garbage bins have to be, I mean, I think it says it somewhere. I have not read this in a long, long time. But the we can certainly add it in here, but it's also something that the commission. And actually, I think in other places in our regulations, we we do require certain screening for and specify what that screening means. So I I think that the commission could approve something with appropriate screening for garbage bins.
Yeah, I don't think we need to define this screening that tonight. I I am of the same perspective. I'm comfortable addressing it as part of the public hearings and the vote on on this in the future. So why don't we, what what is the number to plug in here? Give me some ideas, everybody, please.
Are we talking about the setback?
Yeah, the the setback that and whether we need.
My input's 100.
So for primary and accessory structures and garbage bins, 100 feet. And parking areas and parking areas and other amenities still need to be a decent distance away because you don't want people coming home at the middle of the night, waking all the neighbors up.
Why don't we plug in 50 feet for that for the time being?
Yeah, good, it's good.
And amenities as well?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. And it says it, it says at least, and it's something that, again, the commission can say, well, because the the house next door is so close, you know, you need to screen it, you need to put up a fence. So.
One other thing that's in here, the maximum height for any structure is 35 feet. Are we comfortable sticking with that that limitation for three or four family buildings?
No, no, I think about it.
You know, I look at it this way, the scale of most residential type construction buildings with a 1212 pitch roof and two stories comfortably can fit into that 35 feet because you have probably something below grade. One foot of exposed foundation, you have eight feet of height typically, plus a foot of ceiling joists or flooring rafters for the second floor. So you have one foot, eight feet, one foot, eight feet, and then the 1212 pitch roof on a 26 to 30-foot deep building.
35 is fine.
Are we good there?
Rich? You don't want to go any higher because we don't have a ladder truck in the fire department either.
It's important. No, that's very important. I appreciate that comment.
You know, these guys got to get up there. Plus, you don't want a house that'll make a house stand out from everybody else's even more. And that's not what you really want to do, right?
Good point. Okay, so we're going to stick with 35 feet here, everyone?
That's fine.
Okay, let's go to item E, nothing to review. Design and technical requirements under item F, the second bulleted area, the development of more than X dwelling units, comma, two independent means of access shall be provided for the site. At least one such means of access shall be provided with a frontage containing a minimum of X feet on any street. So I didn't, you know, good point. So if there's more than six units on a on a lot, do we want to make sure that there's a driveway that comes and goes in two places? I'm going to rely on our architect for help there, Bob.
And I would rely on the fire marshal's input on this.
Definitely.
And then they're not that the fire department is not that comfortable with the cul-de-sac roads that I think we're allowing 15, 16 houses on.
This is slightly a different animal, but I would.
I agree.
Input from the fire.
These are going to almost exclusively be on state roads or on town roads that are not that far off of a state road.
Sort of a complex, a complex of 50 units, for example, could be arduous for fire fire apparatus to getting out of. They're going to have to, they're going to have to approve the final site plan anyway, but maybe he could give us some input as to how many units would be legitimate or not.
Can we pick a number of units tonight for the placeholder so we can establish the public hearing? And then request more input, picking a number that we can adjust after the public hearing.
No, you're talking about number of units on one parcel?
Uh, the the threshold is that requires a second access.
Oh, okay.
Is it 10?
I thought that was what I was thinking too, Paula. It's a good number.
Hey, don't don't we have something for streets too, like dead ends? There's supposed to only be a maximum?
Yeah, we're at 13 or 15 on a.
Shouldn't be, it shouldn't exceed that, I don't think.
Yeah, but the fire marshal, we're not comfortable with those, so.
I think 10, would you say, Bob, 10?
Yeah, Paula, Paula and I both said 10.
I almost think that's a lot. I would plug it in, but I think it's a lot.
For the purpose of moving moving this forward, are you comfortable plugging 10 in now and we're going to discuss it in a lot more depth later on?
Yep.
That's just 10, 10 apartments, which really isn't that many apartments.
No, it it's dwellings, our whole buildings, because if you have a three-family, you'll get to 10 pretty quick. Three buildings almost, you know.
Three to three.
I don't want to quell any discussion, but I just want to keep this moving. You know how I love to do that.
And maybe we don't need the the second sentence that's in here in that section.
I I think verbiage at its discretion, the commission may require a second entry or exit to the or more based on site and quantity consideration, something to that effect.
Okay.
I'd like to see verbiage in there if we are looking at a 75-unit apartment complex that we have the option to do it and we have the legal basis to mandate it. Is everyone good with that?
Sure.
Paula, can we quickly word craft that tonight so we get something in for the public hearing?
Yep. Commission may require additional access points, access slash egress.
And just leave it at that?
Yep.
Okay, so it's modified to reflect that. Thank you. Let's see. I think we've we've finished this subject. Okay.
We're we're getting there. Yeah, the density and number of units is something that I think we ought to talk about.
Yes.
The sections G, and I'll have to put this together into the format with number, et cetera, that that our regulations have. It's easier for discussion to have have an easy table of G, letters and bullets, but that's not how our regulations are, but.
I appreciate, yes, so the idea, I missed, these weren't highlighted. So under section G, the first bullet point on the second line is a reference to a subsection, but separate from that, going to the next bullet point, you're suggesting six units per single story dwelling structure per building per structure, 12 units for two, two-story. How did you come up with those numbers, Paula?
It's generally that when somebody's building multifamily housing on a as a you know, a a development of several. It's it's more efficient for heating purposes for the units, for the for the developer to be able to have, you know, one heating system that's heating many units and not, you know, individual.
I'm asking why not a larger number? I I look at the access road between Route 195 and High Street in Wyndham, going from Mansfield over to Wyndham. We have large apartment complexes being built. Now, they have sewer and they have sewer, I realize.
And water.
I want to have something logical going to public hearing that that the public understands the thought process behind it.
This would be.
What's the what's the density of Dartmouth Village, Paula? Do you know?
There's 12 units.
12 units per building?
No, total. It's in the housing plan.
I know, but I.
I think I saw, I think I saw 20. I thought I saw 24 units.
It's actually 24, 24 units, 22 one-bedroom and two two-bedroom.
Two buildings, right?
No, there's like five or six buildings.
Really? Oh, okay.
Yep.
I could, I could see, you know, maybe 10 buildings per unit, something like that, 10, 12.
So you, why don't we stick with what Paula suggested here as a starting point? You know, I think our fondest hopes are seeing some multifamily developments that may be possibly aimed at over 55 that are ranch-style units, and this might help facilitate that.
That's our biggest need right now is is housing for folks my age. But I don't need it, but people in in Columbia are talk, I've always talked about the fact that they they want to be able to have an opportunity to downsize and live in Columbia, and that's not possible. That's not possible right now.
But let's go back to the first.
What age practice is that?
About 50. Oh, my God.
50 plus or 50 plus what?
What is?
The State Department of Housing used to have a program where they would loan towns low-interest money to build what they called senior housing, which was basically over 55, and they were one bedroom, one and two-bedroom units. They were usually in the neighborhood of 24 units per building.
Right, USDA.
Buildings.
Yep.
We did four or five of these projects in rural areas like Columbia. And Paula is exactly right. It's people that grew up in this town, had a family in this town, their family moved away, they're left. They don't want to move. Their friends are still in town, but they want to downsize. So and those, and the and the typical project there was a 23 unit.
That was Wickford Village when it was proposed. Those units were going to sell for $139,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Dartmouth Dartmouth Village got funding like that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they did.
USDA.
And they're.
Yeah, okay, that was very USDA.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
That's what I remember, anyway.
Let's let's go back to that that first thing. Multifamily dwelling developments shall have no more than X. In this case, Paula plugged in eight dwelling units per gross acre of developable land. Is there any way you could get a septic system approved for eight bedrooms on a one-acre lot in Columbia?
It says per acre, but it's you've got it's it's if you're looking at a 20-acre parcel.
I was looking at at a one-acre example of, I I just, if we put that number in, it's a number that is so high that it's never going to be a limiting threshold.
Well, you can't put it per acre because our minimum lot size is 50,000 square feet.
And.
Well, but per acre of a lot. Okay, so we have a five-acre parcel. Do you really think there's any way they can put enough septic systems for 40 units, at least 40 bedrooms on a five-acre parcel?
Well, it's it's also developable land, so you're pulling out the some of the wetlands and things like that. But it's and it is, I don't know. I don't know that anyone would ever be able to figure out how to put multifamily in a town with well-inseptit. However, there's parcels that we have in town that somebody could figure out how to do it, and it might be in an area of town that we wouldn't want something.
The the point I was trying to make with the the eight number is eight is probably such a high number per acre that we're never going to get there. We could plug in six and maybe never get there either. We could plug 24 units per gross acre.
But that's a maximum, not a minimum, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think we want to speak to minimums, or at least I don't have that perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I'm comfortable with eight. I think I'd be just as comfortable with six.
Either one's fine with me.
Yeah, I I'd much rather go with six in this case because, given the scale of development, residential development in the rest of the town, I just don't see a large apartment complex even being remotely feasible, you know, something like we've seen throughout Mansfield where they have septic and city water. And I think keeping the scale of it at six or six or more or less dwellings per acre, I'd be more comfortable with.
Okay, I've just changed it to six.
Is everyone else in agreement? That was just my one person's thought.
I'm I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay, we'll go to six there. And unless the development qualifies for a density bonus per section H below. So we could plug in H there for the purposes of the section, developable land is the total land area minus 50% of the area of inland wetlands, eastman, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so that being said, the density bonus, you talk in terms of 20% of the total dwelling units on the site that are subject to binding recorded deeds containing covenants or restrictions. Um, that are subject to binding recorded deeds containing covenants or restriction where to require that such dwelling units be sold. Or rented at or below prices which will preserve the units as housing for persons and families pay thirty percent or less of income. Or where such income is less than or equal to eighty percent of the area medium income, which has gone into in the. In the affordable housing plan, there's a lot of supporting data there. So that said, I'm going to rely on Paula's expertise. Um, Bob, you've worked on these projects professionally. So all this look. Reasonable to you?
Yeah, it does.
Any thoughts from the commission members?
Looks reasonable.
Okay, Paula, this looks good the way it is, just referring to. Uh, uh, section eight uh, uh, in section G where it identifies a subsection.
Okay. I think we've got this.
This is, Paula, this is really well done. Thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it was well done.
Yeah, I appreciate the work more than you know. Okay, so this is, I'm going to make a motion that this is the multifamily housing. Uh, regulation that will go to public hearing as modified this evening.
Well, second.
On, on April twenty-fifth?
On April twenty-fifth, yes, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, who seconded that? Bob Powell, thank you. Okay. Any discussion of this? Um, uh, all is in favor of setting the public hearing date at April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two for this. Uh, raise your hand or say aye.
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 That's unanimous, correct? Okay, thank you, everybody. Next up is item B, the Affordable Housing Plan. If you haven't had a chance to really go through this in depth. Paula, I think you did a wonderful job here.
Does anybody, does anybody want to print it?
So this starts on page nine of the, the packet tonight.
Anybody need a copy of this? It's easier to read a copy than online.
Yeah, I'm, I'm scrolling through the, the.
Go it a couple of times, it's fine.
Okay.
I'm going to suggest that we talk through this this evening, but not adopt it this evening. Because there's a lot here and I'd like to make sure everyone has had time to go through it. Um, unless you don't agree with me and you think we could vote on it tonight.
But I, excuse me, that the agenda just calls for discussion under this section, so I would suggest that you don't adopt anything.
And you know, and if the public wants to say anything about this, even if it's an open discussion. Even though we're not holding a public, we don't have to hold a public hearing on this. I would really love to hear what the public has to say. So this house, affordable housing plan, I'm going to go into. Page. Uh, four of this. Which is discussing the background of the regulation.
Excuse me, Rob, before you start on page two where it lists all the members of the Planning Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Um, I would like to add the town planner in there as a, the town planner.
Yes, uh, I, I really, yeah, I think you should um sign, you, you drafted this, Paula, you created it. So I would ask you to take credit for it.
Or at least have.
Credit and blame?
So we can blame you, Paula.
Yeah, I figured that's what it was.
She's so modest.
Yeah, no, you know.
And presented by Paula Stoll.
There's time, there's a time to butt heads and there's a time to say thank you. Okay, noted, Bob. So, um. There's a, a, a conceptual discussion of affordable housing. And remember, this is a plan that we can just adopt and it's not binding. Um, no public hearing necessary, a description of public housing. Uh, just lots of good resource material. I'm going through to. Page six of the document, page thirteen of our packet. Um, it just goes through identifying what. What housing is aimed, affordable housing is aimed at. You know? It's been murderous out there for people trying to live affordably. You know, I deal with it every day. Tom, you do? It's, it's.
And getting worse.
Yeah, the percentage that people have to pay for housing is just astronomical in terms of their. You know, net income is just incredible.
I would hate to be starting out my, my work life right now.
I mean, thirty percent plus, and, and then I thought, I don't know about you, Rick, but I thought that was almost low compared to some of the folks I've run into.
Oh, it is. Yeah, the, I see a lot of people spending half of their.
Yeah.
Their gross income before taxes on.
Yeah, and then you throw childcare on top of that and.
I mean, it's one thing if you're making two hundred thousand dollars. It's another if you're making sixty. You know, fifty.
Yeah, childcare, alimony.
Oh, yeah. I mean, not, I mean, kidding aside, not for people our age, but. For a young couple starting out with their first home and they've got a couple of kids and this mortgage and childcare, it's, it's a zing.
You know, and, and you talk to anybody that's building houses. It's just a murderous process to get through the regulatory maze to get. The finished product completed at an affordable price, but well, that's another. Subject. So going through here page by page. Identifies which markets are probably already meeting certain uh criteria for affordable housing. If you go through here, what you're going to find almost exclusively is that these are. Former mill towns. In a, a large percentage of former mill towns with lots of multifamily stock. And that's. Would you agree with that, Paula?
Yes, definitely, definitely.
And, and, and you, and you've also got the conversion of all mills too.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
And a, a lot of that was done with public money.
Right.
You know, private sector money isn't creating the affordable housing for the most part.
No.
Um, going on to. I'm going to talk in reference of the, the page of this document, not the page of the PDF packet. So on page eight. This has a, a. Some really interesting statistics about Columbia, total housing units. The. There's only two people on rental assistance in Columbia, according to this.
And I don't know where, but this is, this is from the, the US Census.
Well, I thought it could be.
I, I, I found that stat from two thousand forty with a population between. Twenty years old and forty years old goes down by fifty percent in the town.
Yeah, yeah.
That's an amazing stat.
It is.
Well, if you take a look at the number of students in the school system, that's. That's an off, offshoot of that somewhat. Uh, just, I want us all to be aware of these statistics. I mean. We should, whatever decisions we make, we should make them with an eye toward what the reality is that. Members of our community are facing and this is generally a, a, a good primer on it. So I'm going to ask you all to read it cover to cover several times.
It's eye-opening.
The chart, the chart on page nine.
Excuse me, Rick, one of the things that uh we need to. Reading this document. Back it onto the previous conversation we had with multifamily housing. The, the future of Columbia is going to be the number of people that live in the town. If it's, if there's a projected decline in population, then the rest of us in town are going to have to pay more taxes. All right, so really what we need to do is sustain the population or maybe grow the population slightly. To offset costs. How do you do that? You, one of the ways you can do that is with affordable housing, multi-fa, multifamily housing. So I think the conversation we had a couple of minutes ago piggybacks on what we're looking at right now.
Oh, absolutely.
It does. This, this, the Affordable Housing Plan is one of the best educational tools. For what we're going to undertake with the multifamily housing. It just does nothing but reinforce the need for it.
One of the things too with affordable housing, this, there's actually the common language of affordable housing is. You know, um, can people afford to live somewhere? And then there's the legal in Connecticut, which is uh the, it has to be, it has to be deed restricted and, and limited. To thirty percent of, of somebody's income. Um, but Columbia's done a halfway decent job without even trying. To, or maybe we were trying, I wasn't around then, the uh, uh, accessory dwelling units. Most of them are affordable units.
Yeah, but didn't Paula, didn't they say we're like a hundred and forty-nine units short?
Oh, yeah, 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 of affordable capital A, meaning deed restriction. Yeah, we're way short on that. However, you know, we've, we've really done a great job over the years with having uh and allowing affordable housing. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, accessory dwelling units. Cause people, you know, the homeowner is getting a little bit of income and somebody else is, is paying rent and, and not. You know, and, and in theory, paying a, a small enough rent that they can afford. So that's, I call that like the little A affordable versus the state, you know? So, um, but we don't, we don't have people, places for, for folks that are, that are retired that want to downsize. Um, don't want to have to clean or clean a big house and mow the lawn.
Rich, Rich was going to say something.
Something to also think about, a lot of this affordable housing is also subsidized, which is also costing the taxpayer money. So where do you find that good balance where? Are we paying a one end, taking that one pocket and putting it in another pocket? Cause nobody comes, if a single-family house costs you two hundred thousand dollars. And it costs fifteen hundred a month and then.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just using a round number, that's all, it's, you know? And then you come in and they put affordable housing in, that's going to have three families. How is that going to be cheap enough for them without subsidies? So, you know?
Well. But there are many times, I mean, the, the bigger developments are indeed subsidized. I don't think we will ever see that here in town. I don't think we will ever get those a hundred and forty, whatever.
Actually, I, I read, I was reading somewhere back when we first started talking about this last year. There are architects and developers that come in and build smaller houses or two- and three-family houses that are getting subsidies to do them. They're not for profits doing it and, you know, there's, sometimes there's tax exemptions that go along with it. So you open that door so that it ends up costing us. Like I say, you take money.
We don't have any, I don't think we have many around here, Rich.
Not here, but they, I read some things where they did it in Bloomfield and some other areas.
We, we have right now twenty-four uh subsidized housing units and that's Dartmouth Village.
Right, that's it.
Yeah, and the, the, the um. Uh, HUD also includes, which kind of surprised me, I didn't realize they did, but in the affordable housing, they, they include uh CHFA loans. For folks, I think it was CHFA, one of the subsidized basically.
Yeah, the CHFA.
CHFA, yeah. Um, and we have some of those.
Not, not many, we don't have many.
We've had this discussion before, but the limiting factor is going to be the lack of water and the lack of sewer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely. The CHFA mortgages, we have sixty-two in town.
Yeah. Okay, that's more than I thought.
Okay, I'm going to move us through page nine to, um. The, the discussion of the housing cost burden and uh. Percentage of households where housing costs are, are very high. Um, and the change over time. So take a look, Paula, this was a really, really interesting chart. Where. In nineteen ninety-nine, uh, under age twenty-five. Um, the change from nineteen ninety-nine to twenty-nineteen, that's without the last thirty percent of appreciation in housing values. Over the last.
Two years.
Two years. We would say Tom is a thirty percent number, pretty solid.
Yeah, that's pretty close.
Yeah. It was eighteen percent until about six months ago and then all of a sudden it just popped up another ten or twelve percent.
Yeah. Well, just an interesting sidelight, not to tire everybody out, but I was, the lady from, who had some multiple listening for the state which spoken at breakfast, I was out last week. And she said the inventory of the houses on the market in the state of Connecticut is just slightly below three thousand. Units that are for sale and they, best they can estimate, there are twenty-two thousand buyers out there.
And every, any given time in Columbia, there's only one or two houses on the market.
Right, right.
That are not spoken for that are built. And there is, uh, every listing that I've had lately is between fifty and sixty showings and.
Gone.
You know, twelve to twenty offers.
Yeah. Can, can I, I don't want to tie the meeting up forever, but just a thought that's always been running through my head the last few years that. I know we keep talking about no city water, no city sewer. Does anybody else feel that somewhere down the line, they're going to bring out water and sewer up Route sixty-six east, I guess we call it? And on to Route six and up towards Andover, where it'd be a straight shot, kind of flat.
I've heard nothing about that.
Open up the development, huh?
I've heard nothing, no discussion.
No, I haven't heard anything. I'm just saying that I can foresee that happening in the next ten, fifteen years.
I, I don't because the water would have to come from Wyndham and. If it's, it has to come from somewhere, you know, it would come from, you know, the existing system in Wyndham, which can't sup. Can barely support what it has, so it would never extend.
It was supposedly, it was supposedly pretty much maxed out in Wyndham for usage.
And it's, it's been back, it is maxed out. It's, I mean, it's.
Even, even though, even though we had an offer for that to get partially paid for by two local business people. To bring that, to bring that line up, we did have, we did have an offer at, at one time on the table. For like a third of the price.
That might have been just pulling it into the commercial area and not residential.
Okay, I'm going to move on now to the Columbia demographics on page eleven. I'm just pointing this stuff out. We don't need to get into this in detail. I just really appreciate the, the. The level of information you provided in this, Paula. It's a wonderful document. I, I just, I read this a couple of times and I was, I read it, I, it was, uh, it was enjoyable reading. So there's, you know, information to support. The direction that our hu, affordable housing plan will go in, that's on page thirteen. Um, examples of affordable housing. Probably. I'm going to guess that a lot of these are not that affordable.
That, these are all uh capital A affordable.
Okay, so these are all subsidized.
Yeah.
Gorgeous looking units.
Yep. Yep.
Uh, then again, if, if you're looking at, at Kent, Connecticut and Fairfield, Connecticut. Um, at what the um affordability index is, it could be the twenty-eight hundred dollars a month is considered affordable housing.
Right, right.
So we, we'll get through into the zoning regulations and I, I have to pat ourselves on the back. Our accessory dwelling unit. Regulation is one of the most permissive ones of any of the area towns. I had an occasion reasonable, recently. To want to help some, uh, client with creating an accessory dwelling unit. In a, in a nearby town and we couldn't do it because they require owner occupancy. They don't allow it unless it's owner occupied. Now. If you create the accessory dwelling unit and then the owner moves out, I don't know how that affects it, but. The point is, um, we have a very nice regulation for single-family homeowners who may want to add another. Apartment in that, that house. Talks about infrastructure, strategies, objectives. And there we are. That's seventeen pages of, of the plan. I think it's beautifully done. Um, if you, there's any suggestions, write them down and then next meeting, we'll discuss season more depth. And then we'll decide on a, a, a strategy for whether we're, went, how and when we want to adopt this. But likely it's going to happen within the next two to three meetings.
There's a lot of, uh, a lot of technical information that's been presented. Paula, you've done a great job in, in doing the graphics on this. It's very, very easily understood in my, in my mind. Um, and it, it really points to. Where we want to go with this thing. I think it's really good. Um, I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, really appreciate it. Um, so you know, I, I would not be surprised if we adopt it as presented. But I'd like you to really read through it and if there's any uh input from members of the commission, all members. I encourage it, uh, you know, send it directly to Paula. And then we can have a discussion of any suggestions at our next meeting. at our next meeting, and then come up with a strategy. I don't want the public to get blindsided by us having this affordable housing plan. I want them to know about it. This is posted on the town website now, correct, Paula?
Correct, in the packets, yeah.
Okay.
The
If there's some way we could have some some other way to take the document as a standalone document, the seventeen pages, and maybe see if, if Mark can get it, Mark Walter can get it from a more public link on the town website, so the public is aware of it. That would be, I, I just, I, I want to know what the public thinks about this too, even though we're not gonna have a public hearing on it. Does anyone want to have a public hearing on this? I don't see a need for it.
No.
Okay, and it is, it's a plan, and it sets out the goals and objectives. I thought long and hard about what, you know, the goals and objectives are reasonable for, for Columbia. And it's, and it's mostly just in, you know, having housing for, for seniors, including those with limited financial resources.
If you remember when we had our Plan of Conservation and Development meetings, not the most recent one, but the one ten years prior, so when, when did we do the P O C D, three years ago?
Seventeen, yeah, seventeen, that more, time flies.
So fifteen years ago, we had a stream of people coming forward, looking, seniors looking for rental housing in town. They didn't want to buy anything, they just wanted to be able to rent something. Now, whether they could afford the rents on a newly built housing project is another consideration.
Issue, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next item. Let's see. The section three revision.
No, the, the recreational cannabis?
Recreational cannabis, I'm sorry, is next. So the recreational cannabis is on page twenty-five of the packet. We had given Paula the guidance that retailing and distribution was just fine. Manufacturing, we wanted to put a moratorium on, and we didn't want a, a timed moratorium, we wanted to, it would be a prohibition for the time being, so we could consider the scope of regulations that we might need to put in place if we ever want to enable it. And that's probably the best way to protect us. And I, I, I think we had consensus on that. I don't think anyone disagreed with it. And I'm very, very comfortable because right now, I don't know what we don't know. And I'm, but I'm comfortable leaving our retail sector and our distribution sector wide open with no manufacturing or and I consider growing cannabis a manufacturing operation, not even really akin to more traditional agriculture, because it's gonna be inside. And dated almost certainly by state regulation.
So this would, at the top of the page, it's just allowing permitted, the cannabis establishments per section fifty-two, seven, twenty-two in the CM one and two.
Correct.
And it's, the, the town is only allowed to have, each town is allowed to have one per twenty-five, one of any one of these categories, one per twenty-five thousand residents. Every town could have one. You, you could have a second one if your population's over twenty-five thousand.
So yet, we can have one, that's it.
We can have one, we can't have ten of them. So.
So I'm comfortable with this, you know, we're not gonna have eleven of these retailers lined up in a row in a strip plaza. Is every, if everyone's comfortable with this, I'm comfortable with this, once we fill in the Xs with putting this out to go to public hearing also in the package.
There's no Xs, only the adopted date is where the Xs are.
Ah, there's nothing to define, I'm sorry, my mistake.
It was my question. So I'm looking at, shall not be located with a thousand feet of a school, which I a hundred percent agree with. Playground, library, or church, now. Is that how the liquor permits work too?
Exactly, that's a, that's a
For a liquor store.
That's the, that language was cut and paste from our, our, our alcohol requirements.
So there's a lot of Spanish churches in Willamette. And there's package stores right next to Spanish churches. I mean, what if somebody opens up a church and now all of a sudden, does that liquor store become?
No, no, it does not. And I don't, every town has different regulations. I don't remember what, what Willamette's Wyndham's are, but if it's
Well, that's why I asked, do we have to follow the same as, do we have to follow the same as the liquors? That's originally what we were basing it on.
Well, this is our, this is our Columbia's language for where our liquor store can go and can't go. That's Columbia's, so the commission had said, let's treat the cannabis retail the same way we treat alcohol.
Yeah.
Stores. How another town does it has nothing to do with, with Columbia.
With us, no, this is just
And it's
I thought, I thought the state also
The state has requirements.
Yeah, like liquor stores can't go next to a school, I know that.
No, that's, I don't think the state cares.
I thought it was five hundred.
Whatever it is, I don't think we need to get into it tonight, if you don't mind. You know, I, we can discuss the requirements, we, we asked Paula to use the same criteria for liquor, and whether it's the criteria are appropriate or not. Let, let's leave that for the public hearing and, and our discussion.
Yeah, we don't need it now, we don't need to kill it.
So is this ready? I think we were going the same place. I was, it asked if, if, if you were ready to move this forward to a public hearing.
Yes, I, I am ready. Is everyone else in agreement that we can move this to the, the public?
I'm, I'm, I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Any objections to that? Okay, that sounds like a consensus.
You did a motion for the other one, do you want to do a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing on the proposed recreational cannabis regulation as presented
On, on April
Twenty-fifth two thousand twenty-two. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Bob's hand went up first. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, aye, or raise your hand?
Aye.
That looks unanimous. Thank you very, everyone. Justin, was you, yes on that one?
Yes, yes.
Next up is character, the wordsmithing. I also make a motion that we send to public hearing that changes and motivated by the word character that have been wordsmithed on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Anyone want to second that, and then we can discuss it?
I'll second that.
Okay, Alex, any discussion on that? We've gone through it, was it seventeen changes, Paula?
Yeah, it's a little bit more than that.
Twenty-two?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, all right, that, that's more wordsmithing.
It's just wordsmithing, yeah.
Everyone, any other discussion? All those in favor of that going to public hearing on the twenty-fifth? Hand up for aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous also. Okay. So we're all set with the item eight-one. Now, next up is item eight-two, the section three revision, the outdoor storage regulation. I'm gonna push us along, because we're getting long in the tooth tonight. So this is on page twenty-six of the twenty-eight page packet. There's just minor items, and Paula, you want to just summarize here?
What the, the goal was, we currently require a zoning per, permit for every single structure, and we describe structure as anything that's affixed to the ground. So that means that if somebody is just putting in a generator, which over the last two years, I can't believe how many generators Columbia residents have, have installed. We only charge ten dollars for, for a zoning permit, but the state of Connecticut charges sixty dollars anytime we issue a zoning permit. So people are paying seventy dollars for these small, I, small items that they're putting in. So the proposal is to require a certificate of zoning compliance, but then change the definition of, of primary structures to, the red is the new, the new language. So primary structure are, are above-ground storage tanks greater than two hundred and fifty gallons, ground, mountain, satellite dishes, and fences and walls greater than sixty are primaries. What's in black there is, is our current regulations, and then adding a phrase called accessory structures, and calling them sheds, pavilions, and pergolas less than a hundred and twenty square feet in floor area, above-ground storage tanks, tanks less than twenty-five gallons, and residential use generators. And Ricky had asked about outdoor storage containers, and I put in the, the, the next page is the what we have for regulations for outdoor storage containers. And the fact that they need a certificate of zoning compliance. And so they don't need a, an outdoor storage container by our, and this is an old reg that I inherited. The outdoor storage container does not need a zoning permit, it just needs a certificate of zoning compliance.
Let me, let me throw out a clarification question. What if you had an above-ground storage tank that was exactly two hundred and fifty gallons in capacity? It's neither a primary nor an accessory structure.
Yeah, it says less than two fifty and greater than two fifty, or my, I suppose it's greater than or equal. I should change that to greater than or equal to two fifty.
Yes, yes.
Okay, you got it.
Rick, let me, let me throw this out there, um, Walt. Hey Walt. There are a number of agricultural circumstances where fuel tanks that are, you know, on farm exist in this town. And they are typically two seventy-five or three thirty. Already exist. That, that is more or less the, the standard, and, and they're not much bigger than a generator that's a, you know, a home residence generator. What's the magic of that gallonage capacity?
Good question.
Resident, resident, residential use, the, the, this was from a staff saying that that's a typical for a residence would have two fifty.
There are resident, well, actually, they're two seventy-fives, but there are a number of residential homes that have oil tanks that are outside their homes as well. And that's a typical size of a, of an oil tank for a residential use.
Good point. You know, Walt, though, nobody's putting oil tanks outside any longer.
No, but they exist, Rick, and that's, that's
I know, but, but this would only address ones that are proposed to be installed going forward. Anything existing would be grandfathered.
Right, and it's, we current, we currently
I'm, I'm sorry, Walt, I, I overspoke you, what were you saying?
But it's, it's, it's a fairly customary thing for a small excavation contractor, a guy who does snow plowing, a guy who, you know, who has farm equipment to have a two hundred and seventy-five or three hundred and thirty gallon tank. And they are, they're, I mean, that's a very small tank. A very small
What would you propose?
I would say, I would say that the size of the tank would be, should be
Five hundred.
Nitted to a greater size, only because they're insignificant as far as a spill until they're, you know, three, four hundred gallons. And the next step up is five, by the way.
Well, currently, all above-ground storage tanks require a zoning permit, currently, new ones. This is just saying only the big ones would need it.
Okay, but here we are talking about Paula, here we are talking about a revising of our regulations. Why wouldn't we want to revise it to be, to meet the needs of the town that, that exist in the town?
So what would you propose?
And do it all at once. I'm saying that, that is a small tank to be regulating as a structure. And I'm, I'm proposing that it be three hundred and thirty gallons or more, or you could say more than three hundred and thirty gallons. And those are the standards, by the way, it's two seventy-five, three thirty, five hundred, a thousand, and on and on and on. But it's very customary to have two hundred and seventy-five or three hundred and thirty gallon tank for a, for a snow plowing business or, or such.
This isn't saying what, that they couldn't have that, it's just saying how it's being approved.
Well, but in this
And the fees that they would pay.
Okay, but, and again, that's the point. You mentioned to me that when we, that's, that's one of the conversations that were the points of the conversation I was having with you as we entered into this meeting tonight, was you said that the commission is, and, and I'm not so aware of that, but you said that the commission is concerned about how much fees they're passing along to the public.
No, I said the town staff, the town staff was
Okay, the town staff is concerned about posing these, these fees on insignificant projects that consumers are trying, or the, the residents are trying to do. Putting a fuel tank for your snow plow business in your drive, in, in the back of your house in a sound condition, that's firebite, the fire marshal approves, should be an accepted thing.
I agree with Walt, there's a stand, there's a standard gallon capacity too, like Walt said. So i- if, if it's an issue of the gallons, two hundred and fifty gallons being a bit arbitrary, because that's not the standard, I agree with Walt.
Also, you know, a lot of people cook and eat with propane, and a five hundred gallon propane tank is not out of the question either.
No, it's not.
I have a thousand gallon, okay, so it's not above ground, but, but I mean, that's a, that's a common size.
So is that what we want to do? We want to have all these little items that are now a common accessory to constructing a house, or heating a house, or supporting a, a, a resident. Each one of them needs to have a special permit and needs to be regulated. Is that what we want to do?
Walt, you're not understanding this, this is
I am. You're revised, you're asking, Paula, and that's what I asked you about before we even started the meeting. I said, are we gonna talk about storage containers? Are we gonna talk about these accessory items? And you said no. My point is, if we're gonna talk about a regulation change for this item, shouldn't we talk about changing it to one that makes sense and doing it in one shot? That's all I'm trying to say.
I, I don't disagree, but this is, this change would allow an accessory structure as defined here in red, sheds, pavilions, pergolas less than a hundred and twenty square feet in floor area, above-ground storage tanks less than some number, and residential use generators would not require a zoning permit.
That's my point, so let's
So make it, put, put a larger number in there. I, you know, I was told two fifty.
That's all I'm saying.
I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
This is getting really long-winded for something that's, I think, rather straightforward. I'm comfortable for, you know, above-ground storage tanks. Do, do we want to let somebody put a five hundred gallon propane tank above ground without a, a zoning permit?
Yep. I think so.
Question to the, the commission.
Yes, they still have to have fire department approval, I mean
They still have to conform with setbacks and things like that.
How would that be, yeah, how would that be if, if it's not regulated in some way? How do we know that the setbacks are met? That they're not putting them right next door to somebody else's house, basically?
How do we know it hasn't been inspected by the fire marshal?
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns.
Right, right, and I, this, the staff, I mean, we hear complaints from, from town residents that, well, the fee is ten dollars, but you owe us seventy, because we have to give the state another sixty. And the state, state has
I think that's good, that lets people know where the money's going.
So it's, I mean, it's, the state
This is getting, this is getting really long in the tooth on this subject. I'm gonna move us, I'm gonna move this forward.
I'm fine not doing this at all.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that, Paula, but it'll be the commission decision on what we do. So as far as what we do, Walt, we, we picked some low-hanging fruit that we thought we could take, no, no longer need a zoning permit for. If there's discussion or a lack of absolute unanimity, I can't say it tonight. If we're not of the same mindset about what we do, wanna take out of needing a zoning permit, then let's just throw some of these in with this next public hearing, and then if we want to add more later, we can do it. We're not gonna come up with an expansive We're not gonna come up with an expansive rewrite of all the aspects of our zoning regulations that that need attention tonight or into the next meeting. We just, we picked some of the things that the staff found most onerous for the public that they had to pay a seventy-dollar fee for, that are are very benign uses. I think the idea of um oil tanks of less than two-fifty, I don't think anyone disagrees that we can wa- waive the requirements for a zoning permit for those. But if we start to get into bigger and more expansive things, then we need a more in-depth discussion. We've done a lot of research on this to this point. So I'm suggesting we go forward with this as it's proposed. And then if you wanna add things in our next round of regulation changes, we'll go at that. But right now, they do require zoning permits, and we're just saying in this next round, we won't put them on the list of not needing a zoning permit. So and when you say if we're gonna do it a change, let's do them all. Uh then we get mired in this quicksand of analysis that we've had for years. We we didn't get a lot done because we tried to reach too far with every every regulation.
Rick, all all I was saying is that my, I'm recommending that we use a logical number on the size of the tank because an arbitrary number of two-hundred-and-fifty doesn't accomplish anything for you. No, no, you, a two-hundred-and-fifty-gallon uh diesel tank for a snowplow business in town likely doesn't exist. It would be in the.
I think these were aimed at propane tanks for the most part, conceptually.
Yeah, okay, well, because it doesn't say that.
No, we, I don't think we had to, but, you know, I don't know of any oil tanks that are, it's very rare to find one less than two-hundred-and-seventy-five gallons.
Yeah.
Any any liquid um non non uh non-propane fuels or non gaseous fuels are typically going to be in tanks that are more than, way more than two-fifty or more than two-fifty by enough of a margin. I don't think we're gonna, it, for the sake of not doing this, I'd rather get this part of it done, and if you wanna approach it, bring it up.
It was a suggestion, Rick.
Okay, I just, we're not gonna resolve it tonight or into the public hearing because there's, you know, do we aim at two-fifty? Do we aim is, then we just, we start getting getting into all kinds of variables that are gonna mire this and and nothing getting done. Unless we wanna take um above-ground storage tanks out of this and not even address it in this go-round. But that seems to be what the staff felt were needed the most attention from us.
Just a point of clarification. Is it, so i- is this saying that sheds, pavilions, and pergolas less than one-hundred-and-twenty square feet would not need a zoning permit? Is that what this is trying to get across? I'm not talking about the.
Yes, yes, you still would need a certificate of zoning compliance. But there's no fee for that.
Yes, so why are giving up our ten dollars? The state doesn't get their sixty bucks.
Yeah.
So let me say how ridiculous that is. If you put a a fif- five-hundred-gallon diesel tank inside a shed, it doesn't need a a permit. Or who would ever know it needed a permit? And that's all, Rick. I'm just, I'm saying that put a rot logic.
I don't know what the answer to that question is, but we're not posing it tonight, Walt. We're we're simply taking our regulations and taking a few items that we were collecting our ten bucks and then also sixty bucks for the state and saying to the state, you can't have your sixty bucks on these.
I gotcha.
That's that's it. Just came up with a list of them. Um the idea that they charge, so, but let's just go at this the way it's presented. Is everyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is going to go to public hearing as drafted. Um I'll make a motion that we go to a public hearing on this section three revision on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. That's a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alex, any discussion? Last chance to talk about this, Walt. Tonight, I mean.
I'm talking.
Oh, I'm, come on, put a smile on.
Um, well, Rick, I I just don't wanna, I don't want it to turn into a pain in anybody's butt. I just thought it would be smart.
I don't think we can resolve it tonight, but otherwise, we're not gonna do anything on this by by the the April, April um public hearing.
And don't.
Okay. Uh.
All those in favor?
Oh, yeah, thank you. All those in favor of uh the April twenty-fifth, uh say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
That's unanimous? Okay, so that's on the public hearing for that. I don't think there's much else we have to talk about, but I do would, um, so nothing under communication and reports, Paula, correct?
Um I just wanted to bring up one thing that um we are having the pleasure of using Zoom. And unless the state legislature does something, uh that will go away the end of um April.
Okay.
So we will be back to meeting in person unless the legislature does something.
Yeah, I like the Zoom. I miss you guys, but I really like Zoom.
We can tell.
Pardon?
No, keep going.
Okay. Uh, let's see, uh, anything, anyone else? Uh, one thing I'd like to bring up in open discussion. Uh, I did have a meeting recently and covered a couple topics with Mark Walter and Steve Everett. And I'd like to discuss some of those with the commission in executive session. But one of the things that came up was the, I felt was a universal consensus that we would like to have zoning required, zoning complaints submitted to the zoning enforcement officer in writing only. And that uh anonymous complaints would not be entertained by the zoning enforcement officer. Uh and we all seem to be in agreement that that was a good procedure going forward. I don't even think we need to adopt it by a formal vote, but rather, but we 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 could propose it and vote as a motion in a meeting, and it would probably carry more weight. Um I do do, would like to point out, Steve Everett was opposed to it. And I wanna explain his pers- pers- uh perspective on it because I have a great deal of respect for what his thoughts are. He said, in this era where there's a lot of retaliation by people, he said, making somebody go on written record of uh having a complaint could spark one neighbor retaliating against the other. And I don't have the same perspective, but I respect Steve's view on it. I respect it greatly, and I wanted to bring his views to the commission. So if there's anyone has thoughts counter to wanting to do this, um please bring it up. Otherwise, I would wanna make a motion that from this point, uh and I know I don't wanna make a motion until we, I hear from all of you how you feel. Is everyone still of their perspective? They wanna require zoning uh complaints to be submitted to our zoning enforcement officer in writing by members of the public?
You want, in the previous discussion, I don't remember us, you talking about it being in writing. It was more focused on anonymous.
Uh, no, I would, I would like to see it in writing. They would need to either send an email or write a letter. Um and if they wanna make a verbal complaint, they need to to back it up, to document who who it is that's making the complaint.
I I think it's, I think it should be in writing because even though Steve brought it up as you get retaliation, well, a person doing it anonymously is the ultimate form of retaliation without any risk.
Yes.
So if you go after somebody, it's like bullying on Facebook almost, right?
I agree.
So.
Yeah.
That's a two-way street.
You know.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, Rich, and 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 um Rick, um, you know, I I have always been the opinion they should be in writing. But I gotta tell you, there's proud of me in this day and age that we're living in. I'm not so sure anymore. Well, I'm just not. If you would ask me this question ten years ago, I would have no question that it had to be in writing. I I this, 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 this climate that we're living in is scary.
Well, you know what? It it's happening more and more anonymously. People starting rumors and crap. It's about time people stood behind the words they say. Because that's creating.
I'm not sure if it's more, Rich. I just don't think it's more. I think, and and I'm not saying, you know, it doesn't happen. Obviously, it does. I just, I I I think that it's scary right now.
Let me just throw out one thought, and I'll try to be brief. About ten years ago, my next-door neighbor was storing their motor home uh on their seasonal cottage lot next door to me all winter long. It was a violation of our zoning regulations. I never complained. We're neighbors. I hated looking at it. It was ugly as hell. I mean, it was ugly as all getup. Excuse me, let me take. So somebody complained about it, and they got cited for it. And he, that my neighbor came to me and.
Blame you.
Did you complain about it? I said, no. My point is, I think documenting a complaint is is always the better path here.
I understand. I do.
So so that said, and and doing it in writing is is a a much better way of doing it. If somebody has a problem writing it up, they can stop in at the office and get it going that way. We'll help them out. The other thing is, I don't wanna limit our zoning enforcement officer's right to pursue violations of that. If they're driving by a property and they see something out in the front yard and it's a pile of junk and they, uh, it isn't, it doesn't mean that every action has to be precipitated by a citizen complaining in writing. The zoning enforcement officer, to the extent that they're aware of something, can take action on something. And and there's more I wanna talk about in the executive session, and if we get long in the tooth, we, I don't think we're gonna have time to resolve what I would like to an executive session, so I'm just gonna plant a few seeds for our next meeting. So I would suggest that we do make a motion uh directing our zoning enforcement officer uh that from this point forward, uh it it would be our uh stipulation that zoning complaints from the public may not be uh done anonymously. They have to be in writing, identifying who who's making the complaint. Any discussion? All those in favor of that? All those opposed? Tom, you oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes. All in favor, except Tom Courier voted in the negative. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um I'm gonna move us on past this to audience of citizens. Is there anything anyone would like to bring up to us that wasn't already on the agenda?
Um. I would like to. Hi, I'm Lisa Napolitano, Seven Hunt Road. I had some things on the affordable housing. Um.
Okay.
Do we have an ability to do multi-use? So you're taking up, you're talking about taking up property in the commercial zone, in the commercial manufacturing zone. Well, commercial manufacturing zone, typically, they're the ones supporting our tax base better than anybody else. And res- residential usually costs more in taxes than commercial residential. And my.
Yep, Lisa, um with all due respect, I wanna hear what you have to say, but that's something that's probably better left for the public hearing on the multifamily housing package. And then as far as the affordable housing plan, that's not gonna be something that goes to public hearing, but it's rather a plan that we're gonna put out there. And we'll probably look for public comment on that at some point, but this.
You're talking about doing the affordable housing plan before April, so I just, it won't take me long. So I was, you know, have, has any thought been given to doing apartments above businesses so that?
You're you're confusing the multifamily plan with the affordable housing plan.
Yeah, I'm just kinda running them all together. You take what you wanna take.
That because we do have a public hearing coming on the multifamily housing, and I think most of what you're addressing uh would be addressed within the multifamily housing plan. The affordable housing plan is a document that is, I don't wanna minimize the effort that Paula put into it, but it it's a a requirement by the state that we have this plan, but it has no weight per se. It's just a guidance document and a perspective document. The real teeth with regard to affordable housing will come within the multi-housing regulation. If we do adopt it, and that's gonna go to public hearing with a lot of ability to comment on it in that vent, in that.
I I am audience of citizens, and I do deserve this opportunity to speak. So there's more ways of making affordable housing than setting off a section.
I'm I'm gonna call you on that because um this was for anything that wasn't already on our agenda, and this, these were on our agenda.
I have more to say. So other ways of doing affordable housing is reducing your minimum square footage. So what if somebody wants to put up a tiny house? So they buy a piece of land, and it becomes much more affordable. To keeping taxes low by limiting all the regulations and all the o- onus of all the things that we do would also help keep housing affordable. And um let's see. And I'd rather not see housing clustered. I'd like to see if you're gonna, if you're talking about, I love the idea that you all, that we allow accessory um residences, you know, you can have a little apartment, and I think that's a really important thing that we do. But you've, if you, so I'm from Windsor Locks. They put up these places where they had multifamily houses, and they cluster them together, and that's where the problems in towns start from. And and I understand that seniors wanna be together, so I get the over fifty-five. But if it's not over fifty-five, I think we need to be careful about clustering them together and let it be kind of spread out. It's the, you know, you can have a two-family house, just about any, or three-family house, or, you know, s- little bits. They don't necessarily have to be all clustered in the commercial manufacturing zone. It's just my point that I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as, wait, one more cannabis, um I, you know, I disagree with you when you said it's a manufacturing when you're growing it, a greenhouse production of anything is still.
There won't be any discussion on that tonight, Lisa. We have a public hearing coming up on that.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh, okay, with that said, uh, anyone else under audience of citizens? I take that as no. I heard something from somebody. Okay, uh, so with that, we are going to move into an executive session. Uh, my error last time we did that, Joshua, you would not be part of the executive session, and we won't be conducting any other business after we come out of executive session. We'll immediately go to adjournment. So we don't need for you to record the meeting after this point when we do go into executive session. And Paula, we'll have you um uh uh stay in the meeting, okay?
Okay, um, people that are not on the uh Planning and Zoning Commission, can you please uh? I think everybody left already.
I think they did. I'm looking.
Wow, yeah, okay.
Okay, so I had a lengthy discussion.